Okay, welcome to this special meeting this Tuesday evening, July 26th. I now call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Nutter.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
Thanks. Good evening and welcome. We're happy to be here in person with options for virtual participation, of course, as well. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. Complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or number three, scan the QR code to sign up, and the code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. These options for a public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so we move on to the public comment period. Let's see, public comment will be considered only for items on the agenda. We'll ask for your comment at the appropriate time. So I think that means we're not taking open comments, is that correct?
For special meetings, we don't take general public comment.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. All right, so can you introduce the first item for me, please?
Yes, Chair Williams. Item number one, pre-application for a proposed five-story residential building at 1885 South Norfolk Street, PA 2022-029.
Okay, this is a pre-application study session to learn more about this proposed development, and to receive public comments, and provide input and comments to the proposed project and its design. The order of this item is staff presentation, and then applicant presentation, and then some opportunity for clarifying questions from the planning commissioners, and then public comments, and then the commission deliberation. This item is a study session, so there will be no action taken tonight on this item. The applicant will be given up to fifteen minutes to present, and all other members of the public will be given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. I want to note that we have one speaker that's speaking on behalf of a group, and that speaker will be entitled to six minutes total. Okay, with that, would you like to go ahead and provide the staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Williams, and members of the Planning Commission. Summer Smith, Associate Planner, here to provide the presentation for item one, 1885 South Norfolk Street, PA 2022-029. The project before the commission this evening is for a multifamily residential building located on North Norfolk, I'm sorry, on South Norfolk Street between Susan Court and Fashion Island Boulevard. It's highlighted here in green. This map also illustrates the location of the city's Marina Branch Library, highlighted in blue to the north of the project site, as well as Parkside Plaza Shopping Center, highlighted in red to the west of the project site. Here is an aerial more specifically showing the project site, which consists of 3.18 acre parcel. The general plan's land use designation for the site is Neighborhood Commercial, which is consistent with the site zoning designation of Neighborhood Commercial or C1-1. The project is also located within the Shoreline Park's specific plan area and within the general plan's shoreview planning area. In this slide will be shown some photos of the existing and adjacent uses. This first row shows the existing uses on site. From left to right is the Fish Market Restaurant, a furniture warehouse, and a temporary slash seasonal use area. The second row shows the Parkside Plaza Shopping Center, the Marina Branch Library, and the Harbor Town condominiums, which are to the east of Seal Slough. The last row shows examples of typical homes found in the single-family neighborhoods to the north of the site. The project consists of a five-story, 483,000 square foot multifamily residential building with 321 units that are for rent. Twenty-four units, or 15% of the base density, are proposed to be designated as affordable to the very low-income category. The residential unit mix includes 24 studio units, 188 one-bedroom units, and 109 two-bedroom units. The residential units are located around a five-story central parking garage. The parking garage includes 376 parking stalls and 216 long-term bicycle stalls. It should be noted that no loading spaces are provided. However, staff will evaluate the requests to modify the loading zone requirements during the formal application. Common and open space areas are proposed onsite at the second floor in the form of two courtyards and on the rooftop deck of the building. Additionally, as required by the Shoreline Park's specific plan, the site plan is configured to preserve the 20-foot-wide segment of land adjacent to Seal Slough, and includes improvements such as landscaping, paving, and passive and active recreational facilities for public use. Here's a roadmap of the upcoming slides focused on the applicable codes and policies. The next slides will cover the general plan and zoning code, followed by additional local plans, and ending with applicable state laws. Beginning with the general plan, the project, as noted previously, has a general plan land use designation of Neighborhood Commercial, which is consistent with the site's C1-1 zoning. The C1-1 development standards and the project's compliance to them are summarized here. It should be noted that certain standards have been modified via state density bonus law and/or the residential plan development. A full evaluation of the project's conformance to them will be completed during the review of the formal application. Additional policy documents applicable to the project include the Shoreline Park's specific area plan, the pedestrian master plan, and the bicycle master plan. Now, moving to applicable state laws. The project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, given that the project is more than two-thirds housing, if the project is determined to be consistent with all objective standards. The project is also subject to state density bonus law. Here's a summary of the project's density limits. Due to the proposed residential PD, the project is subject to the R5 density standards of 50 units per acre. This provides the project with a base density of 159 units. As noted previously, the project provides 15% of its base density to the very low-income category, which affords the project a 50% density bonus, or an additional 80 units. As I will discuss in more detail in the next slide, the applicant is also requesting an additional 82 units as one of the project's concessions. If granted, the combined density of the project would be 321 units, or 101 units per acre. The project is also eligible for reduced parking standards waivers and concessions, which will be discussed on the next slide. The applicant's requested waiver and reduced parking ratio are shown here. In addition to the requested waiver, the project is eligible for three concessions. The first is to exceed the maximum density provided by state density bonus law and the city's municipal code by 82 units. The second is to exceed the maximum building height by 18 feet 8 inches, for a total height of 53 feet 8 inches. And the third is to reduce the covered parking by four stalls. Generally, the state requires that concessions result in cost reductions, do not have an impact on public health and safety, and are not contrary to state or federal law. It should be noted that during the review of the preliminary application, staff identified a concern regarding the requested concession to exceed the maximum density provided in state density bonus law and the city's municipal code. Government code provides that a city may legally grant a density bonus greater than what is described in the state density bonus law, if allowed by a local ordinance. As the city does not have an enabling ordinance, it appears that this concession request and/or the proposed density will need to be revised in order to be consistent with state law and local ordinances. City staff will continue to work with the applicant on this issue. The neighborhood meeting for this project was held on June 22nd and attended by 59 community members. Public comments include the following topics. At this time, staff asked the planning commission to provide input on the overall project as proposed, with specific focus on the proposed use and requested entitlement of a special use permit for residential plan development in the C1 zoning district. Building design and site plan, including architectural design, massing, and pedestrian connection to open space, and other project aspects and considerations for the formal application, such as allowable density. The applicant proposes a multifamily residential use on a parcel in the C1 zoning district. The parcel's Neighborhood Commercial land use designation, consistent with its C1 zoning designation, only allows residential uses as special uses subject to the maximum density of the R3 zoning district, which is 35 units per acre. Additionally, general plan policy PA 4.5, which governs the site specifically, encourages medium-scale public-serving commercial uses, such as retail and restaurants. However, the proposed project only consists of residential uses without provisions for any commercial uses, potentially in conflict with the general plan. To allow for solely residential development in a higher density of 50 units per acre, the applicant has two options. The first, which is what the applicant is proposing, is to request a special use permit for a residential plan development. Plan developments are allowed to promote flexibility in design and development standards to promote its most appropriate use, and to allow diversification in the relationship of various uses, structures, and space. This flexibility is subject to making findings that the use is desirable and appropriate to the neighborhood, in addition to making findings to obtain relief from certain development standards, such as lot size, lot width, setbacks, or parking. This option would result in a different land use in the parcel than what is designated on the general plan. The second option would be a general plan amendment and zoning reclassification to the R5 district and the high-density multifamily general plan use designation. This would allow multifamily residential units by right and increase the maximum building height to 55 feet. Additionally, this option would result in consistency with the general plan land use designation. Moving to the building design. On this slide, staff will provide an overview of the building design, noting that the applicant is present and will be able to provide additional details during his presentation. In summary, the design of the building represents early Spanish Mission Revival, and, as described by the applicant, a cannery architectural style. The Spanish Mission Revival architectural style is represented to the use of gable and hip roof forms, smooth plaster walls, and large arches. The cannery architectural style is incorporated through the use of low-pitched gable and parapet roof forms, rectangular building sections, industrial-inspired colored walls, and uniform window placement. The two styles allow for the incorporation of elements from the dominant architectural styles of the neighborhood and common materials of the area. Additionally, the surrounding uses are predominantly one-story in height, while the proposed design is five stories. The project incorporates a transition in height by utilizing contrasting colors and materials, along with round and flat arches to divide the building into smaller sections that are approximately 25 to 55 feet in width. To conclude the building design section, staff would like to draw attention to the pedestrian access to the site and public open space. In compliance with the Shoreline Plan, the project proposes public access to the slough through two pedestrian paths on Susan Court and Fashion Island Boulevard, as well as through a large arched opening at the center of the building. The central arch is the focal point of the building, which identifies the primary entrance and provides an east-west connection to the public's open space along Seal Slough. It should be noted, however, that the preliminary site plan and renderings depict the use of the central arch in contrasting ways. The site plan shows the opening in the nature of an auto-oriented port-cochere for apartment residents with no pedestrian access. In contrast, the renderings show the central arch as a pedestrian-oriented arcade with a public plaza that provides a prominent pedestrian connection from South Norfolk Street to the slough. Lastly, staff requests input on other project elements necessary for the commission to make positive findings during the formal planning application. This includes proposed design and site plan revisions if the project's density is required to be reduced. The following entitlements are anticipated and include a special use permit for a residential plan development subject to the density of the R5 zoning district, site plan and architectural review for the construction of a new multifamily residential building, and site development planning application for grading of an area over 5,000 square feet and/or removal of any major trees or vegetation. Following the study session, the applicant will have the opportunity to revise the design based on feedback given by the public, the planning commission, and staff. During the formal application, the project will be required to undergo technical studies, including traffic, noise, air quality, and others, in addition to a design review by a third-party consultant if directed by the planning commission. When the formal application is deemed complete, it will be brought back before the planning commission for a recommendation and then forwarded to city council for approval. To summarize, staff would like the commission's input on these topics related to the proposed use, building design, and site plan, and other project aspects. Under proposed use, question A is, is the proposed special use permit for a residential PD or a general plan and zoning reclassification a more appropriate use? I'm sorry, path forward. And question B, should ground-floor commercial uses be incorporated into the project to be consistent with policy PA 4.5? Or is there justification for the site being exclusively residential? For building design and site plan, A, does the commission recommend any redesign or any design revisions to improve the building's application of the two architectural styles? B, does the commission recommend any modifications to improve the overall building mass scale and relationship to the lower-scale surrounding context? And C, do the arched opening and site plan address the pedestrian realm and access to the open space appropriately? Lastly, other concerns. A, does the commission recommend any project revisions if a reduction of density is necessary? Revisions to consider could include unit size, open space, and/or building height. This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available for any questions or comments the commission may have. The applicant is also available via Zoom to present his project and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Excuse me. All right, let's proceed with the applicant presentation, and I think you said it's Zoom, so see how we do that. I'll leave it to you guys to figure that out. Great, welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good, well, it's good to be with you tonight. Thank you for having me via Zoom. This is an interesting project. So this project was originally, I think, came before the public as a for-sale housing site. And I just want to obviously thank Summer, but I also want to mention we had a two-hour public meeting with, I think, over 70 attendees. And so I really want to thank the neighborhood. And as you heard, there's neighborhoods put together phenomenal communication between us and them via a committee. And so I'll try and speak on some of the points that the neighborhood has expressed concern about in tonight's presentation, but some of the things we wanted to get planning commission's comments before we incorporated everything all at once. But when the Fish Market folks approached us about this site, I drove over there, and this was right during the redesign of Block 21, when we were increasing the amount of residential. And I said, okay, if you were going to build an apartment building, you would want it to be adjacent to retail, on bus lines, and close to public transit. You would want it to be in a beautiful location. And then you would want it to be next to a public library. And so we saw this site and said, if there was ever an apartment site that made sense, this is it. And so we talked to the Fish Market folks about that, and they were supportive. Even the shape of the site lends itself to multifamily construction. You'll notice the design is a wrap, so the parking is completely invisible to the general public, which ends up providing all sorts of benefits. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen at this point, if I can figure that out. So, let's go to the first one. So, this is the part of the project that we were really excited about, is engaging this incredible amenity with the apartment community, but also with the general public. And so if you want to go rent a kayak now and go play around a little bit in the slough, it can be a little difficult. And so here, our plan is to create this incredible outdoor space where members of the general public can come and enjoy the slough. And obviously, folks who go to the library. And we'll show you how we're connecting the library with this public open space. First, let me start off with kind of one of the many elephants in the room with this project, but the folks, the Fish Market Restaurant was opened, I think, the year I was born. And so they've been around a long time. And, you know, I don't think anyone has eaten more tilapia, au grat potatoes, and steamed vegetables than I have between Sunnyvale, Palo Alto, and San Mateo fish market locations. So, we understand how beloved this restaurant is. This is a family company that has owned these restaurants for a very long time. And this restaurant is closing for various reasons, not the least of which is simply the operators of the restaurant are not as young as they used to be. So, this is a letter, and I won't read the whole letter tonight, but it is part of the public record. And the Fish Market folks came to us to partner with them because of the success we've had on other projects in San Mateo. So, this is in no way us coming in and wanting to close the Fish Market Restaurant. It's simply us trying to partner with them to create a project that will make sense in San Mateo. You know some of our other projects in the downtown. This is the first 100% multifamily project that we've proposed in San Mateo. We do have 100% multifamily projects in Belmont and Palo Alto that we've constructed. And so I look forward to the opportunity to do that here. Summer talked a lot about this, so I'm going to skip some of these slides. So, Summer mentioned a little bit about public access. And so, public access is meant to occur between the library and the project itself. And one of the concerns of neighbors is security, and making sure that this public area doesn't become a place for homeless folks or for security concerns. And so, this public access area on this side and on the opposite side will be controlled after hours to provide the necessary security. It is not meant for the public to enter the site in the middle of the project. That is not our intended public access point. You'll notice we've developed these seating areas up along the waterfront. These kayaks and stand-up paddleboards will be managed by our apartment manager, and the general public will have access and use of those. We've created this connection between the library and the open space, kind of a gazebo-ish sort of thing for outdoor seating. When you look at some of the other amenities, there's been some concern about the rooftop amenities and the noise refracting down onto the waterway. This area is sunken considerably, I believe about four feet below the roof line of the building. And so, we don't anticipate there to be significant noise transfer, but that'll be part of the studies that are done as part of the technical studies. But you can see here, as we move on, some of the renderings that we have developed. One of the benefits of a long, narrow site is it's great for apartment layouts. The hard thing is it creates an architectural challenge in that we need to make the project not look all the same. And so, you'll notice as we go through some of these renderings what we did to achieve that. And this is standing from the library area, looking back at the waterfront. And it's interesting to note the overpass there, it kind of helps give you an idea of scale. So, we're proposing 321 residential units. As you know, Belmont and Burlingame do not have density caps. And San Mateo still does. And as Summer so eloquently explained, it creates some issues in how does this project actually get built in San Mateo, you know, in today's day and age? And so, because of the planning commission, the city council, and a lot of the general public's comments that we've received over the years, we really wanted to try and provide a residential community in an unbelievable location. And so, how to make that happen is still something that we're trying, you know, going to need to figure out. But we've proposed 24 studios, 188 one-bedrooms, and 109 two-bedrooms. And you'll notice that two bedrooms are quite large. Some of the public comments discussed making the two bedrooms three bedrooms, even in that same square footage, or creating some additional three bedrooms. We're definitely looking at that and open to that. It just starts to impact parking, and so we have to be sensitive to that. As you're used to with windy hill, we're at the very low-income range on the 15%. And I know I've said it in the past, but I'll say it again. The difference between low income and very low is significant for a developer in that these units actually drag on the net income of the project. We've proposed five stories in height at 53 feet. And we'll go through a lot of the pedestrian improvements. But I think from a design standpoint, This is not the first iteration, it's more like the seventh or eighth. Iteration of architecture. And so we we've gone through great pains to try and present something that we felt would be well received. Let's see, we talked about the garage, there's three hundred and seventy six stalls, there's one vehicular entry. You know, there's a lot of curb cuts there today, those will get. Reduced and of course, there's ample tedious measures. I'm going to scroll through a few renderings. This is the part of the project closest to the library. And this is turning and looking the other direction. The cannery design really only comes into play as a transitional element. Between this architecture and the architecture on the other side. And this is the other side, as I referred to it. We wanted to bring it off that corner there, you know, because that's how you'll be approaching the project coming down Norfolk. And this shows you the library. And our public access point would be between the library and this end of the building off the cul de sac Susan Court. And then this is from the water, looking back at the center of the building. There's that, I agree with the planning staff, that wasn't a comment that was made to us, but. We need to take those people out of there, that 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 is not intended to be a public access point. But we did knock that chunk of the building out so that as you approach. The project, it splits it up. This is a rendering that you've already seen, but it's some benching. And then this is a rendering looking straight in. Into the middle of the. Of the project. So a lot's been said about retail. Everybody knows the situation with the retail center across the street, it's had a very difficult time. We believe that the best thing we can do to provide great retail in this location is to build apartments. And to build as many of them as we can, so that these apartment folks, you know, who occupy these homes. Will go support that that retail center across the street. This shows you a layout with the open space, more in plan view. And again, it shows you how how the how the wrap parking works, it works quite well. Like I say, the long narrow site laid out well for for multifamily use. We're excited about the opportunity to provide a large scale suburban apartment, a community in a location like this. It's really an incredible location. We certainly are excited about activating the waterfront, making it more publicly accessible. We're happy to have the retail center there and know that this project will 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 support it and help it. Help enliven it. Traffic is something that was brought up, the community was is. Had some very good insights on, you know, nineteenth avenue and how to deal with traffic in this area. And obviously, you know, we would need to. Figure out how to best address some of those issues. But it is a good transit area, there it's right on the bus lines, there are shuttles. It's easy to get to the train stations. And so we think that it'll be an ideal location for folks who are using public transit. And that's the end of my presentation, I have eighteen seconds remaining.
Yeah, that was perfect timing, actually. Okay, great, thank you so much for your presentation. Right, at this time, I wanted to turn it over, excuse me, turn it over to the commissioners to see if there's any clarifying questions that we have. Is there anyone that wants to go first? We'll go with you, Adam.
I'll go first, through the chair. I have a question, this is for staff, so do both the general plan amendment or zoning reclassification? Or? The special use permit for residential plan development? Do do those require city council approval? So is there is there similar process for those?
Through the chair, all the proposed their proposed plan development, special use permit for plan development. And the zoning reclassification and general plan amendment both require city council approval.
Okay, okay. And then just just for general knowledge, if the planning commission were to not to deny. Either of these options, is it in the applicant's power to appeal the decision to the city council?
Well, the planning commission couldn't deny either of the options, the planning commission's role would be to make a recommendation to city council.
Yeah, thank you. And then. What would be the general estimated timeline? For this project plan, for this project's planning entitlement process? Including such an amendment or special use? Special use permit?
Through the chair, that would largely depend on the sequel studies that would have to be conducted. As well as the different versions of plan cycles we'd have to go through to make sure the plans are complete. Generally, it could take six to eight months to get complete plans. The same amount of time for the for the sequel studies to be completed, because the plans a lot of times will be based on. Recommendations, or if there's any mitigation measures required, the plans might have to update. It should take about a month and a half for it to get through planning commission and city council. Once it's put on the agenda, and then I believe it'll have a resolution which gets approved at city council. If if city council approves the project at the first reading and then at a subsequent subsequent reading. The after two readings, the ordinance would be passed.
Okay.
Or adopted, thank you.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Those are my only questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebner, do you have any questions?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
Through the chair, thank you, I had a very similar question to Commissioner Nugent, which was, do both of those options require city council? Approval, is there any other difference between those two options, the special use permit or the general plan amendment? Any other difference in the process for approval?
Through the chair, Mr. Bustas, if you could assist me with this. I'm not, I know the zoning reclassification and general plan amendment would require an ordinance, which is an additional city council meeting. But I'm not sure if that's the case for the plan development as well.
Sure, through the chair, Renan Bustos, senior planner, procedurally, they're the same. It is subject to city council approval with the planning commission recommendation.
Perfect, thank you so much, that was my only question.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant. And they're kind of more building department or construction related, I guess, but. I'm wondering if there's been a soils report done for this project yet, I know it's kind of early and perhaps not, but.
Yes.
There has been, okay, good.
Yeah, it's one of the first things we did because of its location. And so the project would be built on grade. And we've we've already looked at what what it would take to construct a the project on that site.
What do you think about, you know, peers that are, is there some estimation of how deep the peers would be?
I don't have that information handy, but it would certainly, there would certainly be soil enhancement and 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 paired structures. In order to make sure that the apartment building didn't didn't sink.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had is, I'm not sure if it's applicant or staff, is there any requirement to do a shadow study? For this building, I mean, I'm sure there is, but what are, even though the water is adjacent on one side, that's the. You know, the western setting or the afternoon sun would cast shadows to the water. So I'm just wondering, what are the requirements to study that?
One of the things that the community has asked of us is a view study. And so we're in the process of of conducting that and the community offered certain areas that they wanted us to do a view study from. And then, yes, I believe that a shadow study would also be required.
Okay, that kind of leads me to my next question, which was. I don't know if it's a study or if it's just a general question I have about, you know, if there turns out to be a lot of shade on the water, on the waterway. Does that, is there some way of determining if that's affecting wildlife or the, you know, the growth of, you know. Wildlife and and plant life in that area? Because it would be now shadowed. And I guess that's kind of a little bit of a rhetorical question, but I don't know if there's any. If that's included in a view or shadow study.
Through the chair. This would. This could be studied during the environmental review during the formal application. Staff has the ability to work with the consultants to. To specify the scope of work to to make sure it covers everything that that we need.
Okay, all right, thank you, those are my questions. Right, so at this time, if there's no further questions to clarify things from. Planning commissioners, we can open it up for public comment. So we typically these days have Zoom questions and in person questions. So I think last time we were lately, we've been starting with in person comments. How many speakers do we have at this time?
Chair Williams, we currently have. Three public speakers in person. In addition to the two people who are going to speak for a group.
Okay.
And we have seven via Zoom.
Seven via Zoom?
Yes, Chair Williams, seven.
Okay, so that was like ten or twelve, ten, okay, great. I guess, I don't know, what do we normally do, two or three minutes per person?
Yes, Chair Williams, two or three minutes.
We need to decide, I guess, if it's, I guess, three minutes per person is fine.
Okay.
Decide on that.
Chair Williams, our first in person speaker is speaking for a group. Richard Hedges and Karen Moen, you can come up to the microphone.
Great, and so as I understand it, when you're representing a group, the group. The members of the group are not speaking also, and instead they've sort of ceded their time to you.
There may be people from the neighborhood that speak, but our group will not be speaking.
Great, welcome, go right ahead.
First of all, my name is Rich Hedges and I live in Harbor Town. And as well as our group does, our committee is made up of Harbor Town homeowners who live in Harbor Town. However, we attended a neighborhood meeting, so our remarks tonight will include concerns we heard. From our neighbors as well as remarks from Parkside and Shoreview neighborhoods, because they paralyze, parallel some, but not all of our concerns. It is important to get this development correct and to mitigate the effects. It is more than twice the density of Bay Meadows or Station Park Green. Fashion Island Boulevard is the only east west corridor south of Third Avenue. And north of Belmont that allows access to the east side of San Mateo, and it was so impacted before the pandemic. Actually, about forty five minutes from Ride Eight to Mariners Island. So pile driving is one of our concerns, we want the time of day limited between nine AM and four thirty PM. Some people will be working, but not everybody away from home, some people work at home. The soil impacts, like you had mentioned, is a concern of ours. A liquefaction could be an issue with that kind of pressure, because the water table is so low. We're all got concerned about soil going into the lagoon because it is so impacted and needs to be dredged. We're also concerned with what Pulte development went through, the neighbors around that with. Cracking of the drywall and foundations, and we want to make sure that there is a way to to oversee that. It wasn't done so well at Pulte. So we'd like to have an engineering study to reassure residents that the building will be stable and not cause harm to other properties. And that's properties adjacent to the lagoon as well as around Parkside. We want to have a credible traffic study, no averaging of the traffic around commute times. Nineteenth and Norfolk is tremendously tremendously impacted because of the way it's designed. And there has been money provided by the Transit Authority to study Fashion Island. Pulte granted two hundred and fifty thousand for it. And the traffic impact funds alone for this development will be one point one million. So that money needs to be concentrated on nineteenth avenue without a doubt. Parking, we want unbundled parking in perpetuity, that's the only thing that we'll be able to manage this parking at one point one seven parking stalls for. Per tenant. We also want to emphasize that we want this below market rate in perpetuity. Too many developments, the Cove and Hillsdale Garden Apartments have eliminated the low market rate parking because it ran out. We want to make sure that any future owners of this property cannot eliminate. Our service workers, our city workers and other people who have such a hard time living here. Karen will now finish.
Karen Moen, ten fifty six Shoreline Drive in Harbor Town. In addition to the issues that Richard has mentioned, we remain concerned about the view and the height. We do ask that view studies include the impact on the harbor town, which is directly across from this development. We would like to see it be a store a story lower and that there be light mitigation onto the lagoon. And onto the nearby neighborhoods. The recreational rooftop or the rooftop recreational option that is being considered. Is one that will will put out noise pollution onto the lagoon. And with three hundred and twenty one units, that's a lot of people using rooftop areas. That will not be particularly monitored. The ground level recreation, we recommend. That at the nineteenth avenue Fashion Island Avenue End, that there be no public access there. That is directly across from an area that is a known homeless encampment. And that there are already security and crime problems in that area. We ask that there be a crime prevention through environmental design, a CPTED study done. With recommendations from the police department about what should be done. In that area that through. Bushes, through plantings, through the type of furniture that is there. We think that that's that that could be mitigated, but we recommend that there be no access on the Fashion Island side. No amount about guarantees about security will be in perpetuity. So we think that it's very important that this be done right to begin with. In terms of the kayaks, paddle boards, that could be a very nice amenity for those that live there. However, I'd like to remind the planning commission that there is a well-used park not too far away where boats and. Sailboats and paddle boards and kayaks can be launched from. We also ask that. There be a public amenity tied into the library at the library end of this development. And that that's where the focus on general public access be focused. Because that can then be turned into security related to the library. As well as it's what would make sense in terms of public access, thank you so much.
Good, thank you for your comments. And actually, on that note, I need to reset what I said earlier, we do have enough speakers that. And we have a seven PM wrap up time for our next meeting to start, so we're going to go to two minutes per person. And we'll have to kind of all move quickly through things this evening. So who's our next speaker?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Stu Bruin, Stu can come up to the microphone.
Good evening. I'd like to compliment the chair on her soils question. This is a big concern of mine, as well as the fact that I think this five-story on the edge of the water is just too much. I live across the way in Harbor Town as well. I neighbors with these folks. But this is just too much for this area. If the city can fix 19th Avenue and Norfolk intersection, then we could talk about it. But these people coming out of this building trying to drive a car to work, turning left on Norfolk, it will be carnage. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Williams, our next in-person speaker is Richard Harmison. Richard can come up to the microphone.
Yes, my name is Richard Harmison. First time I've been to one of these, so thank you.
Welcome.
I do have concerns among everybody else. Traffic is going to be bad. They had to build the 92 overpass because that used to be 101. It's terrible. You can't get on and off the freeway there. So traffic is bad. Parking is going to come into my neighborhood. I'm six houses away. You rent kayaks to the public, they're going to park in front of my house. Each apartment has one parking stall. And they're going to charge them to have a parking stall. Where are they going to park? In front of my house. Heist is definitely an issue. You know, five stories. There's nothing in that neighborhood. It's five stories up. Down the street, we have that big complex that just is getting put in. Over a chain company across the street, another 900 units being planned. I'm, you know, within a five-mile radius. I'm going to have 1,500 units surrounding me. You know, we're just overdoing the area. Is our water and sewer lines prepped for this? The walkway? That means nothing. Come on. It's a lagoon. I drive by it, it smells. You know, it's not a very pleasant place to go sit. You're not building on it because it's an easement. You know, they're not allowed to go put pipelines out there. There was an old creek going through that area. My house has pilings under it. I got a couple of them that go down 67 feet, the bedrock. Had to lift my house up. Back of the library is falling into the water. So there are issues with the ground in that area. Repairing the road, Concord and Delaware. You had a big old construction job there. Drive from stoplight to stoplight, it's a whoop-de-doo roller coaster. Who's going to fix this? Contractor or is the city dropping the ball and not repairing the roads here? I'm going to have the same thing in front of me. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our last in-person speaker is Klaus Najal. Klaus, you can go up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Klaus Najal and I live actually behind the Smot and Feiner Hooging Lot. And definitely if the traffic gets affected, it takes me forever to get out of my, off the back of my property. And we had this issue a couple years ago. To build a CVS store up there. And lucky, didn't get through. And what's just a CVS store? Because when you go north, on the left side, you have the gasoline station. And on the right side, you have the CVS store when you're four hours. So just from the gasoline station, we have backup homes for Delaware. And all the traffic was coming from the freeway, got stuck over there. So that's definitely the issue. Besides, from the foundation, I live actually behind Smot and Feiner. And there was request to put some more storage for the Smot and Feiner store. Okay. And actually, what happened after half a year, the project was canceled. Okay. And then after one and a half year, the heavy equipment starting digging there and build actually a loading dock. Was this for the eight foot from my bedroom? So that's no more freedom. I cannot even sleep no more, day and night going on. So I asked the city to take care of it, but the city will say, they wouldn't be in way from any business. So I called the police, they said, go to the city after many times. So unfortunately, I cannot afford to move, so I have to deal with it. So what happened? Two days before the year was starting ticking for half a year. I had had some visitors from from my country, so I had to move him out to the hotel because he could not sleep there. So and I had to go there too. So and I really cannot believe who idea is to build this project on the lagoon. I mean, you destroy complete flair of the lagoon. The whole city, middle playground, what is on there, you know, is acceptable. The fish market is acceptable. And already cost of, yeah, cost from the, from the, from the fish market. You have the million-dollar houses. And they already have problems with it by picking up in the morning, four o'clock, the garbage. The garbage truck, but it's very noisy too. So any development over there, yeah, any development over there makes it actually worse. So I asked the city to cancel this project.
Thank you for your comments, but two minutes is up.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is via Zoom. Our next speaker is Charlene Krantz. Charlene can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, actually, I'm Charlene's better half, but she can talk too. Appreciate you having these meetings. Often you'll hear a term banter around the highest and best use in the real estate business. And what's highest and best use for a developer is not necessarily the highest and best use for the community. I think this program is a little bit too quickly launched. We almost seem like it's it's going to happen. We're just trying to figure out how to make it happen. I completely agree with my my colleagues and consorts that we need to do an actual traffic study on 19th, not just a pretend one. And I'll take you another step further. We need to fix the traffic before we could even consider this project. Pulte Homes is not fully launched yet. They're not fully built out. They're not fully rented. Once that happens, it's going to really impact the traffic and it probably would skew any study you do in the, in the, just taking data points from like yesterday and tomorrow. It's going to be very, very different when Pulte finally launches. It's a great project. It's just a wrong neighborhood. I was reading in today's news where the fish market has officially shut down 3775 El Camino Real down in Santa Clara. Do you think the developer would consider building it down there? And I'm not trying to play the not in my backyard card. I just think it might be a perhaps better area. Completely agree with my other neighbors that this is going to be a traffic nightmare, a parking nightmare. Probably on the other side, they're going to be going to permitted parking only. And that's a whole, we have it here on Shoal Drive. It's a bit of a nightmare. It's a constant trying to, trying to make it work. I really would implore the city to not just try and ram this through and make it happen, but to really do an actual study and be real about it, be really, really cognizant that we actually live here and this might not work. I yield the other five seconds of my time to the group.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, we actually have one more in-person speaker. Jordan Grimes, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, staff and commissioners. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm speaking tonight both as a San Mateo resident as well as on behalf of Green Belt Alliance. We are an environmental nonprofit decade to climate resiliency and sustainability, and we are in support of the project tonight. Green Belt is very excited about the potential transformation of this area, currently dominated by a large surface parking lot into badly needed new multifamily housing in San Mateo. Given San Mateo's significant jobs housing imbalance, we're especially pleased to see Windy Hill prioritize both density and affordability, utilizing state density bonus law to maximize buildable density and creating 48 new very low-income homes at a much deeper level of affordability than they are required to do by city code. In addition to the affordability component, the proposal is close to services and amenities, offers new open space and utilizes a comprehensive TDM plan, including transit passes, unbundled car parking spaces and more than one-to-one bicycle storage onsite. The projects, excuse me, the proposed projects close proximity to jobs and transit and commitment to affordability and sustainability aligns with the vision set out in the city of San Mateo's ongoing general plan update. Green Belt believes that 1885 South Norfolk, the Fish Market and Project Like It will play a pivotal role in reimagining a more climate-friendly and sustainable San Mateo for all to enjoy. We are proud to give this project our endorsement and hope that you will move it forward eventually. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is via Zoom. Our next speaker is Nunea. Nunea, can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear us? Hi, Nunea, can you hear us?
Nunea, you can go ahead and unmute now.
Should we try coming back to her?
Okay, Chair Williams, our next speaker is Ryan. Ryan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Ryan Modashami. I'm an active transportation and housing advocate and transit advocate in in San Mateo. And I, first of all, I wanted to say to the, you know, the community members who've come out to discuss this project. Thanks for providing your input. And I recognize that one of the main, you know, one of the concerns that you've listed is traffic-related concerns. And I just wanted to throw out there that I lead a group called Move San Mateo, we're a local chapter of Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. And we're trying to advocate for helping to fix traffic by reducing the number of cars on the road. So if you have an interest in working on those issues, one thing on our radar is the 19th Avenue Norfolk Fashion Island Boulevard under Highway 92 and 101 junction, that whole mess out there, we're, we're, we're trying to work on that. So if you have interest, check us out, movesanmateo.org. That, that being said, I will say that one way to help deal with traffic is by reducing the number of people who need to live in Hayward and commute over the bridge and then exit on Norfolk Street to get to jobs and businesses and other places that they're coming out. And that's what this infill project will do. It will provide sorely needed housing. I'm sure everyone here can relate to having a family member and not be able to afford to live here anymore. We need to build housing in the city. And this is an amazing project that will do just that, in my opinion. So that being said, I appreciate the developer working to maximize the amount of housing that can be built and recognize that height and density limits and parking requirements are what is making it financially and feasible to do things like add retail or add more housing to the site. So Mike, as a developer, thank you so much for bringing forward a project that is visionary and its TDM goals, like doing unbundled parking and putting housing near transit to incentivize Sam Trans to increase their frequencies here. This is a good project and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please. How many more speakers do we have, by the way, Ashley?
Chair Williams, right now we have seven more speakers.
Okay.
Ism.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Williams, our next speaker via Zoom is Russ Breed. Russ, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, can you go ahead, please?
Yes, this is Russell Breed. I live at 1792 South Norfolk Street, just beyond Roberta. And have a few concerns. One is we've had issues with water and sewer in San Mateo. As you know, they're redoing the waste treatment plant. And so with this new development, since the sewer line runs in the back easement, not down the street, I was wondering, how is that connection going to be made to this project? Is it going to be going through the parking lot over there at the Parkside Shopping Center? Or how's that going? The other thing is, since there is limited guest parking for all these people, I assume that's going to be guest parking is going to end up in the Parkside Shopping Center, which is going to decrease the access for other people that have to drive down to the shopping center. So that is a concern. Another concern is, and they brought it up before, is pile driving. It took quite a while for the waste treatment plant to drive all their piles. And I'm concerned about the pile driving that will take place to support this large structure, given the fact that we're on landfill and I've already experienced settlement cracking of my foundation. And with the added pile driving, what is that going to do to foundations in the general vicinity? So those are, those are my concerns. I'd like to see how those are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Ally Saperman. Ally, can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Ally Saperman and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition, a member-supported nonprofit that advocates for creating more housing for residents for all income levels to help alleviate the Bay Area and California's housing shortage, displacement and affordability crisis. I'm here to speak in strong support of 1885 South Norfolk Street. As you know, the region is in the midst of a severe housing shortage. To meet our RENA goals, San Mateo must continue to approve as many dense well-located and well-designed housing projects as possible. 1885 South Norfolk, which has been identified as an opportunity site in the city's housing element, would do so by bringing over 300 new homes to the city of San Mateo. These homes would provide housing options for residents of all income levels, as the project would have a mix of market rate and below-market rate homes. I'd like to highlight that the project addresses the need to create more homes for our most economically vulnerable residents by dedicating 15% of its below-market units to residents with very low income, 50% AMI, which goes above the 80% AMI requirement set by the city. Finally, this project is excellent use of land. The project is currently occupied by the Fish Market Chain that is struggling throughout the region and is scheduled for closure shortly. This would leave the land unoccupied and severely underutilized. 1885 South Norfolk will address this issue by taking advantage of the site's location and transforming the space into 300 new homes for future San Mateo residents. Please move this project forward without any delays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Nate Adele. Nate, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Nate Adele. I'm the resident 1815 Hamlet. Coincidentally, Klaus Nagels, direct next-door neighbor. In general, I thought this would be a good place for multi-unit housing for years. In general principle, I think this is a great development, both for San Mateo and the neighborhood. I am concerned about the scale of this development, particularly traffic. If I can only say one thing here, please look at the traffic on Norfolk, not just 19th, the impact. And please look at the impact with the people coming and going to Parkside Elementary because we already have a terrible backup at three in the afternoon. It's not the traditional commute over here. Second, the parking on this is entirely inadequate. We have too many people parking on our streets right now. It either needs more parking. I don't know whether the unbundled is a good thing or not. Or we need neighborhood permits, but like it, it's just going to be a nightmare here if it goes in as is. Lastly, and when they do the view study, make sure they're looking at the northbound views out into Parkside, not just across the way into out into Parkside, not just across the way into Harbor Town. And I think it was addressed, but I do think it is a little bit of a bummer. They can't get ground floor retail in here to make up for the loss of the fish market. Lastly, I just wanted to address something that Move San Mateo did. And if this can get wrapped in, I mostly work from home, but I do bicycle to and from Caltrain and bicycle access along 19th from here to Caltrain is terrible and it's very unsafe. So, yeah. If you take one, only one thing away, though, please look at the traffic on Norfolk and the impact on traffic to or from Parkside Elementary, because it's already a problem even without this development. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Noel Langmac. Noel, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. I would like to speak in support of the project tonight. As other speakers have mentioned, we are in a housing shortage and do have a jobs-to-homes imbalance in the city of San Mateo. It's wonderful to see a project proposed like this in a location where it can bring density and 300 new homes to the city of San Mateo. I'd also like to point out that the site has been identified as an opportunity site in the city's housing element. And I would like to echo comments made prior, thanking the developer for the inclusion of bike storage and TDM. That is all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Rick Sakuta. Rick, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. I would just like to echo some of the sentiments mentioned by the riches, Rich Hedges, Rich Harmison, Rich Krantz. The traffic is carnage. It may not be now, but before COVID, the traffic was really bad. I think you've heard that from just about everybody that's spoken about the project. And I don't see how this is going to reduce the traffic of people going through Hayward. The pile driving is certainly going to be a concern for the nearby residents, and we're on landfill here. So with a sensitive watershed nearby and the Marina Lagoon, I think that's a great concern to us as to how the pile driving and subsidence could affect the area. I'm concerned with the density of the project. It's just so massive. And we were against massing and now we're for it. So I think that's just way too much for that, for that intersection, given the character of the single-family neighborhood and the recent development that the community did support at, for Pulte Homes. And I'm also very concerned about the water and the sewage. So I think that's a coming problem. So that's certainly of concern to us. I see most of the comments coming from people in the neighborhood that know this intersection, know the property. And I see a lot of the other opposing comments coming from special interest groups that don't live in the area. So I think there's, there's a dichotomy there that needs to be addressed. But thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us all out.
All right, great. Thanks for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Vince Rocha. Vince, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Vince Rocha, Vice President of Housing and Community Development with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. What you really have here is a unique opportunity to see how you can make housing work here, especially because you have a developer who's worked with the community before in the city of San Mateo. And the city of San Mateo has a really high RENA allocation, where they're going to need 7, 1,777 low-income units or very low-income units. And developers proposing to build just that type of housing, which is so hard to subsidize, even if you have the tax dollars to do it, and to have a market-rate developer willing to put that onsite in your housing proposal is really amazing. So there's a need for all affordability levels of housing. And that unique site, you know, may have some issues, but this developer, I think, has a track record in trying to build great traffic demand management measures into their developments. So I just think there's a unique opportunity for the city and the community to work with a developer on addressing any outstanding issues to deliver really needed housing here at this location. And again, we're proud to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. How many more speakers do we have?
Chair Williams, we have three more speakers via Zoom.
Okay, so just so that the Planning Commissioners know, we'll be going over our 7:00 PM start date for the next meeting, so that we have a chance to. Okay, let's go to the next speaker, please. Thanks.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Nunea. Nunea, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Nunea, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, at this point, I think we should just go on to the next speaker. Thank you. Sorry that we can't hear you. Trials and tribulations of Zoom.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is David. Dave, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Go ahead.
Great. My name is David Pickett. I'm a resident of the Parkside Neighborhood. And I'm not opposed to the project because I realize that we need housing in San Mateo. And I'm hoping that, you know, the more housing we build, it helps with the traffic across 92. But my concern is that in this neighborhood, sort of east of 101, we don't really have a whole lot of, like, retail and restaurants, and definitely not a lot of upscale ones. And so it's kind of a bummer that, you know, the fish market is going away and nothing is replacing it. I'm not like, I'm not someone that's like, oh, we have to have the fish market. I understand it's going out of business, but I just think it's an opportunity to put something else in part of the, the ground level of the project. You know, there's, I've been like paddled and boated on the whole lagoon, and there's just a lot of space on the lagoon that's sort of waterfront that's kind of wasted. Like, there's parking lots and stuff. And I just think that this is a great place to put a restaurant with outdoor seating. You know, I thought it would be nice if it was next to the library. With outdoor seating there, the library has a nice patio that doesn't really get used. It'd be great if the city could put in, like, a small coffee shop, sort of like the downtown library has, the main library, that people could utilize the deck there on the library and, and then a restaurant in the ground floor, just at that end of the new development. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Carrie Russell. Carrie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Hi, there's, there's just a number of things that concern me about this, but the main one is the traffic that we're facing. As you know, the exit of Kehoe, as well as southbound 101, south and northbound exiting 3rd Avenue, and people speeding through our neighborhoods to get or cut through 3rd Avenue, the backside, to get to Hayward was one of the main things. Traffic speeding through the neighborhood, through Kehoe, Norfolk, and Cobb, Dix, all the backstreets is putting the kids and some of our elderly residents, you know, in danger. It's, it's, people don't care when they're coming from San Francisco or San Jose direction. And, and they're just wanting to get home. They're just flat-moving through the neighborhood. I've contacted the police about this and asked them to do a traffic study or public works, to ask them to do a traffic study, to ask them to put speed bombs or, or things on our streets. And we get really no results. So that's a frustrating part, as well as, you know, you heard the water issue, sewer issue. That's going to be a big drain on us. And then I have a big problem with the low-income housing. That is, yes, these apartments are giving low-income housing, housing to some. However, I believe that subsidized out with our tax dollars and those companies' apartments are getting full-paid reimbursement from our hard-working income. So, I mean, check on that, because even if low-income pays $300, who's paying the rest? I think the housing issue is going to be better helped if we could bring the prices down on apartments, not $2,200, $2,400 for a one-bedroom. We need to bring the housing down so people can actually pay for our two incomes.
Okay, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off.
That's okay.
Thank you very much. All right, who's next?
Chair Williams, our last speaker via Zoom is Lori. Lori, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, Adam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I would like to express my concern about putting this number of housing units in this location. Oh.
We can hear you, but I don't know if there's something that needs to be muted, but...
Okay, sorry about that. The number of housing units in this area, we are losing our retail and our businesses in San Mateo. And I'm concerned that this is just yet another loss. I'm concerned about the style that is way too, way too much glass in this. And I'm concerned about the traffic. There's an inordinate amount of traffic in that area already. And I think there needs to be better studies done on traffic than what's been done for the city so far. And I would encourage the city to have additional meetings with the community. I feel like the community voices are not heard by the Planning Commission or by the City Council. So I would suggest additional meetings and that there is some attempt to accommodate the comments of the community. And the last few projects I've participated in, I've seen absolutely no concessions to the communities for their concerns. So I hope you'll take those into account for this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. And I think that's our last speaker, so we are going to run over our next timeframe, as I said. But let's turn it over to the Planning Commissioners now for comment. And at this time, as I, as a reminder, it's, we're not, you know, taking action tonight. We're just providing comments. Summer, is there anything you want to have on screen for us to reference specifically? Sorry, I should have given you a heads-up on that. And so who would like to start? Should we? Should I have Adam start? All right, last, last time I went that way, this time I'm going this way.
Sure, I'll start. Thank you, through the chair. So, the, I've got a, I'm trying to go through the comments from our, from the meeting packet or topics of discussion while you're, while you're bringing that up, just to kind of stick to an outline of, of what we discussed. The, the big thing that I think about for this project is the state density bonus law and the use of the density bonus law plus a concession for the density. And it's not so much a matter of, you know, an objection to the housing. It's, it's more a matter of the, the legal precarity of that. Just, it's, it's not going to be up to the Planning Commission whether or not this project goes through. It is, in some way, shape, or form, going to end up being protected by the Housing Accountability Act, as long as the project applicants provide something that is in compliance with our ordinances and state law to get a, a special use permit for planned unit development or general plan amendment is going to require City Council approval. And just the timeline of it, I mean, we don't know, as a Planning Commissioner, what the City Council will decide. And we don't even know what the City Council composition will be at the time that this project goes to decision. And so my input for this is that it's important that a project goes through and we get a good project that the people of the city like, and also a project that meets the needs, which, you know, housing is a major need for cities, especially very low-income units. But I worry that the project could be hamstrung by this kind of unknown aspect of the combination of the state density bonus law and a concession for, for additional density. So this isn't an opinion about the project. It's, it's more a matter of, I want to make sure that what gets provided to the city to eventually approve is something that will get approved. And it's, we're not spinning your wheels and we're getting something that the community likes. So that's, that's what I have to say about that. I think it is ambiguous as far as where that, that lies legally. And to look at the general plan as it is right now, it is, you know, a neighborhood commercial land use designation, which allows residential. And so residential is an allowed use. It, the general plan does encourage medium-scale, public-serving commercial uses, such as retail and restaurants. So like, as a, as a Planning Commissioner, I would have liked to have seen, you know, some sort of ground floor retail. But that requires, that would require significant change in the building design, notably to provide parking or some sort of access for that use that would be different than this configuration, which is completely focused on residential. And so I'm not sure if that's feasible, either from economically or just from a design perspective. However, it would be nice to have. And I think there would be community support for that. And it could be tied into the, to the library. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to keep it quick beyond this. So the other thing about a planned development is that the needs to meet findings that the use is desirable and appropriate for the neighborhood. It's hard to, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to know what that means. Is residential desirable? Yes, in the sense that we need more housing units in our city and in our region without, you know, any, you know, it's like, it's, it's pretty clear economically. Is it appropriate for the neighborhood? You know, I would say yes, but other neighbors may not. And so who, who determines that? You know, that's, again, it's not going to be the Planning Commission that makes that decision. And then, so those are just my general comments about the project itself. I just worry about the precarity of it as it is proposed and the timeline and, you know, not knowing what the, the City Council is going to decide on it. So you're, you're setting yourself up basically to the whims of the City Council by doing this. I, you know, I want to make sure that a project here is nice and is created. I'm going to go into design, building design and site plan. I do think that there was some comments earlier about the, the limited amount of visitor parking. And I do agree with that. I think that there should be additional visitor parking. I have, I had friends that lived in an apartment building on Norfolk on the other side of 92 for a long time, and I would visit them. I'd have trouble finding parking there at their apartment building. And, you know, I think that, you know, I hate to push for more parking, given that we need to be moving from other, to other modes. But given the number of units, I think, what is it, four or five visitor parkings? Spots is probably not quite enough, unless there is some sort of additional space designated on the street, which I don't think there is. And then I would also like to see three bedroom units. I, I, again, it's nice to see the, the two bedrooms for sure, but it would be great to have additional family sized apartments available. And then I'm also a little bit concerned about the, the light for some of the corner units in the, in the, in the courtyard U shapes of the, of the building facing the, the slough. And so those seem to have not a whole lot of light access considering the size of the units. So I, I would, I'm a little concerned about those, the, the future design of that. And then I would like to see kayak storage, if you're gonna have kayaks, because people will probably own their own kayaks if they live there and they have a dock in addition to, you know, bicycle storage. And then just a couple of comments on this design of the exterior. I, I do think that some of the, the gable roof lines of the project are very blank above the window lines at the top. And there could be an opportunity for additional decorative window, vent, or some sort of art at the gable portions that are, that are rather, you know, massive in scale in blank along, you know, as you can see in some of the renderings, like rendering on page A01, those gables just extend quite a bit higher and there's just blank wall, which I think could be softened up. But overall, I think that the, the modern Mediterranean portion is more appealing to me. But I like having it broken up, so it doesn't feel so massive horizontally into two different styles. And then also the red color, I don't know about the red color, I feel like that's a little bit dark and and could, could potentially age poorly, I'm not sure. I'd actually rather have something a little lighter, a little bit more and more consistent with Harbor Town. And those are my comments, so sorry, I'm trying to keep it quick.
I was actually checking to see. So if we can each kind of keep to, you know, eight to nine, eight to nine minutes or so. I guess I should be speaking, that may be helpful to get through the evening in a timely manner. That was about nine minutes, so just as a guideline. Do you want to go next? Either, which of you would like to go next?
Sure, through the chair, I'll go next. In terms of the proposed use and the, the two options to achieve the high density multifamily use case, it, as, as staff explained, the process is the same for both of them. To me, it seems like the general plan and zoning reclassification in some ways would be less risky, because then you would not have a use that conflicted with the general plan.
Sorry, can I just interrupt you? I didn't read the email that I received that says that we're not able to notify the next meeting that we're being delayed. So I guess the question was, do we want to postpone this until the end of the next meeting? Or do we want to just continue on and the people in the next meeting will just be waiting? That's the problem with the special meeting, so I thought.
You want, do you want input from?
I mean, I feel like we should continue, we've started. And I just thought I'd let you know that the next meeting, they don't know that we, there's not a way to notify everybody.
Through the chair, I would say that we continue so we can let the people who are here for this topic go when we're done.
Go right.
Sure. So yeah, I think the, the general plan and zoning reclassification would be the less risky option, given that they both have the same process anyway. But when staff explained the timelines, I started to wonder about our own general plan process, which I think we want to wrap up at the end of 2024. And so I wonder if by the time the applicant is ready to go through entitlements, if it's going to be right in the middle of wrapping up our general plan, looking at the current documentation for the general plan, that area is proposed to be medium density mixed used, which is four to six stories and 50 to 99 units per acre, which is consistent with the use that they're proposing. So I'm not actually sure between the timeline and the general plan process and then a general plan and zoning reclassification. It, it seems like there's a path forward there and I'm not sure which one is the simplest. I agree with some of the comments that I think it would be great if there was some ground floor retail restaurant included. I understand that right now it's, it's a difficult time for our retail and our restaurants, but that specific site waterfront dining seems like a really unique set of conditions that I think could attract a tenant there, and it would be a great amenity for the complex. What else? In terms of design, so I have one concern about how this site is laid out. And that is that, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, the California Air Resources Board published an air quality and land use handbook in 2005 that considers the risks of poor air quality on sensitive receptors such as homes, daycares, et cetera, and recommends against citing these uses within 500 feet of a roadway that averages in excess of 100,000 vehicles per day. Currently, 92 east of El Camino Real meets that criteria. And so I checked the site and going 500 feet away from 92 goes into about half of the site. And so I am concerned about the air quality in that area, particularly in the outdoor recreation spaces. And so I would ask the applicant to consider modifying the design and modifying the site to minimize the impact of the air quality from 92 as much as possible on the residential uses. I don't know if there's a way, maybe, I, I, I understand the desire to hide the parking garage, but could the parking garage be pushed to the side of the site along 92 and used as a buffer against particulates in the air? Can we try to concentrate the roof deck and the other open spaces to the north side of the site so that when people are out enjoying that outdoor space, they're not potentially breathing in hazardous air? And also just from an affirmatively furthering fair housing standpoint, I'm concerned about putting below market rate units in a site where the air quality is poor. I appreciate that we have bicycle facilities located on the ground floor. I would ask the applicant to consider potentially charging for bicycles, given that electric bikes are the fastest selling EV right now. From a color standpoint, I agree with Commissioner Nugent that the red seems a little dark and potentially might be dated. I prefer the color schemes on pages A03 and A04, which I think is the side facing the library. It's a little bit more neutral, feels a little bit more traditional and timeless. The columns facing the water to me looked a little bit odd. I think the columns facing the side of Norfolk seemed better integrated into the design. And then I heard some comments from the public asking that there not be public access along Fashion Island Boulevard because it is adjacent to a known homeless encampment. And I would, I would not restrict access to the, the public park portion of the project. One, because I just would hate to create a pinch point for the public where everybody who is walking or biking would have to walk down Norfolk into that one access point across the library. It's have, making people have to go past the vehicle entrance to the site, and that could be potentially a little bit more dangerous. But also because I think that our unhoused neighbors should be able to enjoy our public open spaces in a safe way. And so I can understand wanting to maybe restrict access at nighttime, but during the daytime, I don't know that I agree with that request. And just in general, I would encourage in the design of that outdoor area to make sure that sometimes the anti-loydering architecture can get a little bit hostile, you know, when you have places to sit that are bumpy to discourage sitting, it, it makes for a not great park experience. So I would, I would be mindful of that and try to create an open space that is inviting for people to actually enjoy. And I think that's all of my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Abner, go right ahead.
Through the chair, thank you to the public for all your comments. I, I will say that this developer has proven to be very amenable to working with the public. They have demonstrated that throughout their history here in San Mateo. So I would hope that they will have listened to you and will incorporate your concerns. For the residential PD or general plan and zoning reclassification, I think there could possibly also be an enabling ordinance. Would that be included in, in the residential PD or the general plan? Or would it be a separate ordinance from those two pathways? Just curious.
An enabling ordinance would probably function similarly as a general plan amendment in rezoning in terms of process, where you would, you, it would have to be adopted by council, but I, I think we need to understand more what you're thinking of when you note an enabling ordinance.
To address the, the state density bonus proposal that the, the applicant has put forward.
We would probably have to evaluate the specifics of a proposal like that and then how it aligns with our local regulations and, and ballot measure Y as well.
Okay, so it looks like there's numerous pathways to address their requests that the staff and the applicant would have to work through to see if it would be feasible for the Planning Commission to approve and subsequently move it on to the City Council. Correct?
Yes, I mean, it appears either pathway would require a recommendation from the Planning Commission and final action from the council.
Okay. I too would like to see a small amount or some amount of commercial use on the red, on the ground floor. I think it would be advantageous to the, to the development if there was at least a coffee shop or a delic, a delic, a delicatessen. I could see people using that as a destiny. They could sit outside on the patio, enjoy the scenery and, and just, you know, just enliven the whole experience. I honestly think out of 428, 82,000 square feet, you could carve out 10,000 or 12,000 and have some amenities that might be a, a boom to the, the project. I also think that we need to address drop off and pick off, drop off and pickup of Uber drivers and Lyft. I think there needs to be a, a, a central place for the delivery of packages from Amazon and other organizations that they have an, an area to pull into and, and use for their processes. I think that the SEQA document will be quite revealing to see what is feasible in that location. I do know of, in San Francisco now, there are lawsuits because the settling in, in Mission Bay is causing quite a bit of consternation with the neighborhood where the sidewalks are, are failing and the buildings are secure. I would hate to see that type of a mess occur here in San Mateo. People are consistently talking about water in these new developments, as they should be. Currently, the city of San Mateo purchases and discards roughly 9 million gallons of water a day, which we do not use a single drop of to recycle. I think a, as we continue to build our new residential areas that are dictated by state law, we also have to think about how we're going to be smarter with our natural resources. You know, initially, I thought this project looked way too massive. And then I looked at the, I looked at the drawings and saw how it fits perfectly on that site. It, it's like it was, it was thought of years ago that this could be a great multifamily spot. Of course, it's in the middle of a built out urban area. So there are going to be different concerns that need to be addressed by the applicant as they move forward. I wouldn't change anything on the architecture, so I think it's wonderful. The color may be something that might not age well. But overall, I think that the, the project height and density fits the lot exceedingly well. We are going to be looking to traffic studies and the SEQA to see how it works overall environmentally and, and for traffic mitigation. I love the arched openings. I, I, I was hoping that they would be more for pedestrian, the main, the main arch opening would be more for pedestrian access. I think it would be a wonderful way to keep, get people into that, into the spot. I'm, I'm a little discouraged that the access for the public is going to be on either end, where it's just, it, it just doesn't give me the same feeling that, you know, you really want people on your property if you're making them enter from, from both ends. I'd like to see the arched area also be incorporated as a, an, a spot to encourage people to use the, the, the facilities. With a reduction in debt, if a reduction in density is necessary, I, I, I haven't thought about what would be the best uses or changes for the property. I honestly feel that there are great ways to get to the five stories with the densities proposed, and I'm hoping that we do not have to reduce the density of the property. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Now I'll set the timer for myself. Okay, so my comments. The site is going to be empty, so housing is a good use for the project, for the site. Housing makes sense there. However, just because we need more housing doesn't mean we should be irresponsible about it. And I do take exception to one thing you said, it's not really built out in an urban area. It's a suburban neighborhood with very low slung, you know, almost kind of Eichler or mid-century single family homes in the neighborhood. So it's, it looks like an urban building, but it's really set into a very suburban neighborhood. Kind of brings to mind a building, I think it's in South San Francisco like that, that really stands out quite prominently among the single story homes. I don't think, it has additional, it has the added density due to the state density bonus. And I'm, you know, don't know that it needs to use the concession for additional bonus. It sounds, and I'm not sure exactly what the correct avenue for that would be. But at this point, I wouldn't be able to, I would need to deny it. Well, I don't know if I would be required to deny it, but it has the added density currently due to state density bonus. So that seems like, you know, some decisions that would need to be made as far as how to move that forward. I do think that ground floor commercial would be beneficial to the project and would be an asset to the community. It is more costly to the developer. I mean, a commercial kitchen will cost the developer a lot of money to, to, to put in, you know, a restaurant or a coffee shop or whatever. But I think it would be money well spent on the project. You know, these are the kinds of decisions that developers have to make. But it would be, it would, it would be nice, as you said, you know, sitting by the water. And that's, that's what people like about the fish market. It's, it's got, you know, it opens up to the, to the water. So I have a couple of questions or issues about, like, related to the next items of building design, the site plan. I do, I am concerned about the construction issues. I recall the issues with the Pulte project and that what the neighboring community had to deal with. I'm not sure how that was resolved, but I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of. These will be very deep piers or piles that'll go in here because of the soil conditions and the water. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed in this next round. I'm glad there's a soils report already done. I'm sure that's, that's a whole process, I know. I think in terms of design, so I guess I'll start by talking about the setbacks. I know that in the concession, I think one of the So I guess I'll start by talking about the setbacks. I know that in the concession, I think one of the concessions was setbacks. On the library side, there's a seven foot setback when the required is 20 foot, but because of the concessions, it was allowed, as I, as I recall. I'm not saying it needs to have a 20 foot setback, but seven foot is pretty minimal, given that it's a, you know, it's a nice place to walk. I love that library. I, I find it to be, you know, so inviting and glassy and peaceful. And so to encroach upon that, on that end, I think is you know, is detrimental to the kind of use of that library and the people walking to and from. So I would like to see that setback increased from seven feet to something in between seven feet and 20. The setback on the other side, I have the same thoughts as Commissioner Patel, that we're trying to, you know, be cognizant of, you know, the most helpful way to, to design and plan a building and coming right up to the, you know, seven foot setback as close as you can to Fashion Island Boulevard, not to mention Highway 92, is not the most helpful way to live. So I would like to see a greater setback at that end as well, something much more than seven feet, much closer to 20 feet. Yes, it means you'll lose units and that's, you know, again, sometimes to get appropriate design means you have to make some concessions or some compromises. On the water side, I guess it's just my concerns about the, the shade on the water, the, you know, I actually have kayak there and, and paddle boarded there. And, you know, you want the sun, you want, I mean, it will block the wind, I suppose, which is a good thing, but I, I think it should be reduced in height. I, I think it's too tall. I mean, I'm a person that loves the outdoors and is, uses the waterways as well. And so I, I just feel it should be reduced in height. I'm not sure if it needs to be a full floor or what. Maybe it means that some of the elements, like the roofing structure could be reduced, but I've reduced in height, reduced in height. The street frontage, I think, is fine, but the waterfrontage concerns me due to some of the issues I brought up earlier. Let's see. The design, though, I do like. I really, I mean, I, I looked at the architect's website and was reminded of a lot of great projects that they've done or that they have in the works or, or have done that I've walked through and enjoyed. So I, I have, you know, I know, I trust that it will be a nice project, a beautiful project. And I like that sort of use of that terminology, cannery style use of materials and colors. So I think it's going in the right direction. I was a little bit confused by all the different, you know, color schemes presented in the, in the packet. And I think that it needs to be toned down a little bit as well. I don't know, maybe I'm, I could, I might have more comments on that later, but I, I mean, not later tonight, but in the future. I think that it's in the right direction. There was just a lot of colors going on. I do like all the windows. I like the fact that the windows look like they go close to the, the window sills go close to the floor. I'm not sure if that was the case, but at first glance, that was kind of looked like they were, you know, nice airy open things, which is, which is what we want. I guess, I think I've covered, you know, the issues about windows. Let me think, see if I have anything else. Actually, where am I on time? I guess in terms of the arched opening for whether or not that's pedestrian or it sounds like the applicant confirmed that that's not really a pedestrian pathway, that that is a driveway to get to the parking. And, and the parking is nicely hidden. Although, yes, 1.17 spaces for this number of units is difficult. And I think, I think the thing is that the bigger the project and, you know, when there's, when there's that, that just means that there's more parking or more parking out in the neighborhoods in the streets because, you know, it so we can talk about, you know, alternative means of transportation and this is not as close to transit, although it's close to bus lines, but there's, you know, schools in the neighborhood. So there is a lot of traffic there. I mean, I know the schools in that neighborhood and I think the 1.17 is a little bit, excuse me, low, given the size of the project. I think that kind of covers all my comments. Let me make sure. Oh, actually, looking at height, I made a note to myself that the Morgan building over at Bay Meadows by the same architect is four stories tall and it has a really nice scale to it. I really like that building. So I, I think I sort of covered all the points on screen and in my notes. And in an effort of time management, I should probably stop. So that's it. Let me just see how I did. Okay. Less than nine minutes. All right. With that, that wraps up all of our comments. And if there's nothing else, we can move on to the, we can adjourn this meeting and move on to the next one.
We will need about five minutes to transition.
Okay, great. Hopefully we'll be back about 7:30. Thank you.